Father God, we're grateful to you for your presence in our lives, for your blessings of this great city. Thank you, Lord, for our opportunity to serve the people of Valdosta. We pray tonight that what is said and done here will be pleasing to you and beneficial to all in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had time to look over and review the minutes from the July 20th, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. Move on to our lone public hearing item, consideration of an ordinance to grant plan development approval for a mixed-use child daycare and school facility, an OP and single-family residential. Zoning is requested by Jonathan Irvin. Matt Martin, our planning guy, to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. As we talk about the work session and as described in your packet, this is an amendment to a planned development request from two years ago for a combination of a daycare center and a school facility. Subject property is split zone between OP and R6. The main purpose of this amendment is to add some more property to the planned development geography. Specifically, they're adding the single-family residential lot, which is in the lower right-hand corner of that mapped area. Zoned R6 has a residence that was on there. The building is there, but it's no longer occupied. Applicant is proposing to demolish that building, replace it with another building that's also residential in character, but just a little bit larger, and use it as a support building for the main facility. They are not adding capacity to the facility, but simply adding more room to what they already have, including some much-needed parking spaces. I mean, just to run through some of the background information, character areas, established residential, the aerial image, this is from a couple of years ago, before they built the school facility in the rear yard, as you see the rooftop of the daycare, and the rooftop and tree pattern of the surrounding neighborhood, boundary survey in your packet. So photographs of the subject property include the view from the front with the signage and the existing building that's been there for a number of years. Driving through the site, this is the pickup and drop-off area that's on the east side of the property. South side, the internal drive where it goes back toward the school, detention pond and playground on the right. When you get into the back, this is the view looking to the south with the secondary drive out to East Adair Street. The view back behind, this is the rear side of the daycare center with its playground, and then the internal parking lot that is in front of the school. The core that's being added includes this residential building. They're already using it for overflow parking so they can get the parking lot in place, which will go here in the rear yard area. Surrounding patterns, as the zoning map indicates, you've got the industrial zoning with the vacant crack and good site that's across the street, church across the street, the view looking south toward the Cypress Street intersection, the professional office building that's on the property immediately to the south, and then west review down Adair Street. And then in your packet is a comparison. There's the site plan that was approved as their master plan two years ago, along with the certificate that outlines the seven conditions of approval that are binding on the original PD, the new proposed site plan, which is mostly the same, except that it adds some of that new geography, and then some building elevation drawings of the new proposed building that originally started as a house plan type design, but they've modified the full plan to better suit their needs, as you see here. Pride Commission reviewed this after a meeting on July 31st, a public hearing. They found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, the plan development review criteria, which are there in your packet, and they're recommending approval subject to seven conditions also, but a little bit different than the first group of seven. We went over those changes, I think, at the work session. Important thing to note is the maximum square footage of the facility is being increased from 16,000 to 20,000 square feet, which is more than double what the new building would be. And also importantly, the removal of an expiration day that we customarily put at the end, and that is simply because the plan development from two years ago has already been activated with its expiration, and there's simply an amendment to that. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any additional questions from Tuesday? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please state your name and address.
Jonathan Irvin, 831 McCoggan Road, Augusta, Georgia.
Good to see you.
I basically, I thank Matt for explaining what we're doing. I just wanted to cover and see if y'all had any questions in regards to the use of the building or any other, anything that y'all need to, that you don't understand.
Looks like we're clear on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request that the applicant with the seven approved conditions is stated.
Motion in a second. Any further comment? All in favor, show of hands. Wonderful. Congratulations. Good luck.
Yes.
Move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of a request from the Valdosta Lounes County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Counsel. The Valdosta Lounes County Airport Authority has requests to proceed with the design of a new general aviation terminal and the design and reconfiguration of a parking lot. The total amount of this project is $625,080. The FAA has offered to fund 90% of the allowable cost, which is 78% of the total cost. There would be no cost to the city of Valdosta. There's no funds required for these projects. The FAA has prepared a grant in the amount of $625,080 for these projects. The agreement must be executed and returned to the FAA by August 25th of this year. A resolution has been prepared authorizing the mayor to accept the grant in order to proceed and process these documents. Staff recommends counsel approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept and grant in the order to process these documents.
Counsel, any questions for the city manager?
Let's leave that.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I?
I make a motion that we approve this request as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of bids to replace the basketball courts at the Mildred Hunter Center and provide new lighting for their administrative building. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, this is a request to replace the basketball floor at Mildred Hunter Center. The existing floor is a composite floor that has reached the end of its useful life. We have a bid for $225,250 from CBA Sports to replace the flooring with a hardwood floor system. This would come from ARCA funding. Council had allocated $245,000 in total for both the projects. This bid would cover only the basketball floor and would include floor self as well as installation, but would not include any remediation to the concrete floor beneath the basketball floor. This would leave about $19,750 for the lighting that would need to be installed at the administrative offices. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Have they deemed that adequate? Is that $19,000 adequate?
I think it would probably, I thought it could be borderline. We'd have to identify some additional funding possibly, which might be available in SPOSS Eight as part of their allocation.
Question. Chuck, has anybody looked at the subflooring to make sure that this new wood floor would attach well to it? I mean, have they done any kind of tests on that?
I believe that they're gonna have to, you talking about just the attachment itself? That I don't know. The remediation, I think they're gonna have to get the floor up before they can look at it to determine that.
Oh, okay, all right. So, we're not doing this with any contingencies? Do we need to do any contingencies?
Well, it might not hurt to do a contingency, but bear in mind that any contingency used, again, would reduce what was available for the lighting. I know George Page is in the audience, but it might be, you could either put a contingency on there, or we could look at the difference coming, again, from that SPOSS Eight allocation, or the minor difference that might be that the authority could handle it.
Well, I mean, my only reason for saying that is that if they get into it, it has to be remediated, which it just might. We're gonna have to have that expenditure, otherwise the flooring can't go down.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Do you mind if George comes forward?
No, sir.
George, would you, would you come forward?
The gentleman that came out with CBA Sports, he actually, he met with Andre, Andre's here as well, and he came and put the price in on the flooring. There was never anything mentioned about any issues that we would come, that would happen possibly after the existing floor be taken out. Now, obviously, when you're dealing, you know, there may be something that happens to come up. Well, we got approved $245,000. The lighting, the other piece of it, I think it's around $11,000, $12,000 more, in my understanding, we hopefully want to be able to pull that from SPOSS Eight funds. So, let's just say hypothetically, if there was issue, possibly, maybe look at doing that as well as what's designated for portion rec, maybe. I'm not sure. I'm hoping that that was never even, and the guy actually came down and inspected it and did everything, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that won't be an issue, but it's a great point.
Well, I hope not. I know, I served on the Conference and Tourism Authority, and we're getting ready to redo the flooring and the main exhibit hall, and we're having to test it for moisture, because we're gonna put carpet down and make sure the carpet will stick.
That's right.
And I just was curious, when I didn't see this included in there, if this could be something, so.
I just don't feel we should test, if the company came out and they looked at it and they didn't see anything, they felt that would be a problem. I don't think we should add to it to make it a problem with contingency, and if it does, SPOSS Eight would still have funds to help enhance this if that problem does come up.
Okay, I think that would work, and I can't hear him say that it won't be an issue. I'm hoping it won't be.
You can't say it's gonna be.
But he never even mentioned that. Because we're proud, Joe, had to go through.
No, Andre, go ahead.
Well, I met with him, and he told me that it would be, would be a problem what we have at this moment. He never said this, when he should, he looked at it, he shot everything, he stayed in there and looked at the floor, he measured it, and he came back and said to me, hey, we're ready to go, just wait until you get.
Good.
Are we allowed to do a contingency since these are ARCA funds that we'd already allocated? Are we allowed to do that?
This was as a wait-and-see.
Okay.
I think we can go for it as a wait-and-see and address it.
If that's okay.
If a problem comes up, yeah.
But we'll certainly follow up with him this week to make sure.
We'll get the floor done.
But currently, you haven't seen any evidence of moisture or anything under the floor that you have now. It's just wear and tear.
That's it, yes.
And I understand that still doesn't mean that there's.
There's not.
Might be an issue, but as far as we know, there's not.
Right.
We have a plan in place in case we do need more money.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that, we will make sure that, just in case he missed it or what, that that does not, that that is tested, whatever we need to do, make sure it's not an issue.
Well, I would certainly ask the question.
Oh, we will, trust me. We'll make sure in the next day or two, and.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I can answer the additional amount from SPOSS.
Certainly, yes, certainly, certainly.
That, I think that answered my questions, because I want to make sure that they were gonna have to spend some of that money on the lighting, right?
Yes, ma'am. About, I think around $11,000, $12,000 extra out of SPOSS because it went over the original 245 for the ARCA funding, for the two combined. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for any of the three, Thomas?
The entire foundation is concrete.
So, yes, sir.
It seems like it would be unlikely.
Yes, sir. And the existing floor that's been there since the inception of the center, there's never been any water issues really, where it's popping up, things of that sort, so that's a very positive sign, too.
Well, all I will share with you is at the conference center, as we did borings, the test.
Gotcha.
For moisture, and in part because the company we're choosing for this new carpeting in there said that they won't guarantee the adhesive will stick.
Right.
As we can verify, there is no moisture.
Do you know about, if y'all did the borings, about what part that may have been just that, or?
I don't think it was very expensive.
Okay.
We had, my memory is somebody locally did the borings and done the moisture check.
Okay.
But it's concrete floor, too.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Chuck or any of the other two gentlemen? No, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much. Counsel, that one's yours for action.
I make a motion that we approve this request as stated.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Good going. Thank you, Counsel. Item B, and that is consideration of bids for the purchase of playground equipment for the Shannon Hill Park. Chuck Dinkins will again present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bid for, again, playground equipment at Shannon Hill Park. The bid is $81,097.44. The list of equipment is in your packet there, and you can see it includes typical playground equipment to be supplied by Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. The bid was obtained on a source well contract, and it will be funded from SPOSS Eight. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Eric.
Yes, sir.
Chuck, for our citizens who may not be aware, could you tell them where Shannon Hill Park is?
That is the park over there, kind of in the triangle between VSU and Gonto over there. It's, currently has a kind of a backstop, but no actual lined-out field, so this would enhance the usability of the park, especially for younger children.
Counsel, any other questions for Chuck?
It's kind of over there by Alden, right?
I'm sorry?
In Alden area?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, making a recommended approval of the request as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Well done tonight. We'll move on to item six, citizens to be heard. It's the portion of the meeting that we asked you to come forward, state your name and address, and we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to councils as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It's our policy to follow through with you almost immediately. We also ask that any groups that want to address the council designate a spokesperson to represent the group and their comments, again, to ensure that all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to come forward tonight at this time?
George Foster Ryan, 504 Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. This may, and counsel, silence give consent. I was sitting home this afternoon, and I was listening to the news and talking about how one American citizen threatening the judges, threatening the district attorneys, threatening witnesses coming up in his particular case after he was indicted, and I sit there and I'm thinking, I said, now, if everybody did that in this country, soon this democracy would fall. And so, it's just something for us to think about, because once we start eating away on that which we have enjoyed for so long, can you imagine how many other people gonna start threatening judges, district attorney, et cetera, et cetera? Bid as it may. And so, in that process, I just could not sit, I had to come out tonight to talk about Quinlan. City Council and the county commissioners will now be meeting every quarter because they say they need to work together on behalf of the voters. I think that's a good gesture for both the city and county to come together. I put up five videos the last week and a half concerning those state flag. I'm doing that because silence gives consent, and I do not agree with disrespecting members of our armed forces, especially men who are stationed near their force base, and I'm gonna say on that issue, because I'm 100% correct. I know that if other cities, counties, and states in the United States can fly a flag, I just believe they are no better than us. And eventually, that flag, and if the government bill was here in the city and county, they will go up. It's just the right thing to do. And I just wanna let you all know that I stand for truth and justice, and I stand for what is right, and I will not be silent and give consent. I go to the parks out of there this week, Payton Park, and children help use the bathroom behind the park because the doors is locked. I went to Scott Park, same thing, and I just believe that your time is real, and I've been up in Quantico, that's my hometown, my place to my birth, if they can have a place for the little children to use the bathroom, especially in the summer months, when they are out of school, the doors are not locked. And I don't think they're no better than us. And I'm not gonna sit here involved as a citizen retired military veteran, this service country for 20 years, and I can't say nothing about it, and we're gonna keep talking about it, maybe in 50, 100 years, somebody will finally listen to this man who's only concerned about others, not necessarily himself. Thank you so much.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Maria Willoughby, and I wanted to put forth an endeavor to get the community more connected overall, to help fight against homelessness and crime in Valdosta. As it stands, there's 9.9 people out of 10,000 homeless in Georgia, period, in our small city of Valdosta, I'm sure is a lot higher, and I am founder of a small organization called The Art of Good Incorporated, which caters to the muted and muted members of society. Those are people that are homeless, that have been victims of the criminal justice system, mental health issues, whether there's admise or not, and a lot of times, these members, you know, don't have a voice to be heard, and there's a lot of untapped talent that is there. I'm currently working on a community outreach to the churches to get them more involved. Instead of the churches reaching out to the community, we're reaching out to the churches because they're there, but they're not working as much as, you know, to their full potential. What I'm proposing is a residential shelter in District One, and it'll be starting districts month through three. I know there's ordinance that have to be met for that to take place and to be legal. I also would like to request an initiative to get you guys involved for an outreach to city council, to get involved in initiative to give these populations a voice. And the way that you guys can help do this is that you can partner maybe once a quarter with one of the members or one of the clients that are there to, you know, monitor their progress and see how they come along. I would like to personally work directly with the budgeting and city manager departments because you guys have the power, you guys have the funding to make it happen. And this is a proposal I'm suggesting. I'd like to provide you with my email address. Some of you already have it. It's info@theartofgoodincorporated, incorporated is spelled out, dot com. And again, it's called The Art of Good because there's an art to being good. You know, a lot of times, we try to feed out of both sides of the pockets, but we can't do that. If we're taking initiative, we have to go full speed ahead, and I'm willing to do it. I already have a draft proposal out, so I would really appreciate budgeting and city management to contact me so that perhaps we can work on looking at that initiative together. Again, churches and the city to keep our city of Valdosta beautiful and use all the resources that are here, including the people that are sidelined and segmented, to reintegrate them successfully back into society and build our city even more. My name is Maria Willoughby. Thank you so much for your time.
Maria, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Hi, I'm Samantha Mathews. Reside at 469 Conway Circle in Valdosta. On behalf of the Journal Center for the Arts, I want to say thank you for your continued support of the arts in Valdosta Lounes County. I also want to walk, invite you to our music in the art park this Friday. It's great to be around, so if you're doing, if you have free time on Friday, please come out from 7:00 to 9:00 and enjoy great community and life in the park. We also have the Ledit Amp Concert Series, you're well aware of that. We went to a national contest to win that $180,000 grant for three years, and so we have a wonderful lineup of 10 concerts in a row that start on August 17th. These are completely free to the public. What we try to look for at the Journal Center for Arts is things that gather our community together for good, just like the lady was saying, I have a lot of respect for her program. Just looking for, just this is a place where it doesn't matter who you are, what you look like, what you do for a living, you just come out with your lawn chair, with your friends, your dog, with your friends and pets and whatever, and just have a good time with us. That is Ledit Concert Series, and that starts August 17th. Also, because of your support, because of gracious people in our community, and also a million dollars that we receive from the state of Georgia, we are having a groundbreaking for the Children's Imagination Station on Thursday, September 28th, and we welcome you there. We really would want you to be there to celebrate with us. We're gonna close down the street, we're gonna have a great ribbon cutting, we're gonna mark the lines on the ground where the footprint of that map, that beautiful building will be. So, we're gonna ask you to imagine with us, as you look at those markings on the ground, what our kids will be doing inside those walls, starting in 2025. It seems so far away, but you know how time flies, so that's September 28th, please come and join us at the Journal Center for the Arts, and like I said, we're closing down the street, so following that event, those of you who are not going to Boy Scout Dinner because I know that's a wonderful event, you can cross the street with us and join the Trail of Ed concert, so it's an all-night affair. And then last thing I want to say is that the Pre-Dinner Series that kicks off on October 5th, you know, there's, I can't stand when people say there's nothing to do in Valdosta. We have such a culturally rich and arts community that, you know, people just have to open their eyes and get involved. Thank you for what you do, for making communities so precious in this area. Valdosta Lounes County is so wonderful because of you. Thank you for your service.
What time is your ribbon cutting, September 28th?
5:00.
Thank you, Samantha. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard?
I'm Becky Crosby. I live at 1012 Cherry Creek in the city. I just wanted to say thank you for the funds that you came up with for the pickleball courts. If you've gone out there recently, there has been progress in the last six weeks. People are getting very, very excited. I had two more calls today from people from out of town, when they're out playing. I said, in this heat, there will be people out there playing, but playing in the morning is a lot easier on some of us. But I just wondered, I'm asked almost every day, maybe more than once, about a timeline. I don't know if there is any timeline for completion for the courts. Weather's been good lately, a little hot, but they have been working, and there've been some disgraced people that have said, oh, 2024. I'm hoping, and I'm trying to say no by the end of the year. Do y'all have any something I can tell?
So, the last timeline I heard was by the end of the year.
End of the year, okay.
Yes, and we're gonna put that timeline out. We'll make sure that it's on the city website.
Great. Thank y'all so much for your help.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard?
Okay, my name is Lewis Gordon. I'm a little bit too Shanna Circle. I realize that last time I came up, I was a little bit vague, and I guess that wasn't fair. I went to, you know, last time I came up, I talked about the decriminalization of marijuana in Valdosta. I don't think I gave a clear reason for why, so I'm gonna do better today. Okay, first of all, there's 11 cities in Georgia that have decriminalized, right? So, Athens, Atlanta, Clarkston, Fort... So, Athens, Atlanta, Clarkston, Forest Park, Fulton County, Macon Big, Big County, Savannah, South Fulton, Stonecrest, Tybee Island, all of them have decriminalized. And a lot of people don't understand what that looks like. Kingsland, Georgia's place I was stationed at, I didn't know they'd decriminalize. So, they say it is, it should be enough for any person to possess one ounce or less of marijuana within the corporate limits of the city of Kingsland. Any person found guilty of violating this section should be punished by a fine not to exceed one hundred and fifty dollars. For the court finds that it defended as well, the financial means to pay the fine, the court may direct the defendant to perform community service, consumer with the fine, but would otherwise be imposed. In no event shall any person convicted of marijuana possession pursuant to this section be punished by imprisonment of any term. And that's it, right? I understand that there might be a reluctance to move forward on this, you know, be progressive in this area, because, you know, there is a fear of, you know, just a little bit of social collapse, right? But the evidence has shown in other places in the country that that is not what happens. The evidence also bears that everyone prospers from it. I myself do not partake, don't plan on it, right? However, just because we don't partake doesn't mean that we shouldn't be progressive in these moments, and realize that these issues do affect people that we live next to every day. Our organization is doing a petition all throughout Georgia to get some traction behind legalization and decriminalization throughout the entire state. All of these signatures, this is three hundred plus signatures, I turned in about half of them, so we have about six hundred or something that we've collected just in the past few months. These are from residents of Valdosta. The people who go to the polls each year, they're very interested in this, y'all, and it's not even just them being hard on, like, okay, no consequences whatsoever for it. They just want to see some progression in it. And what I'm proposing is just a talk with people who are interested in this, to figuring out what moving forward in this issue would look like. It would go a long way for a lot of people, do a lot of good, and I think it's about time. Thank y'all.
Lewis, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll close out that portion of the evening and turn it over to Richard Hardy for the city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, we have a lot going on. This Wednesday, the sixteenth, we're gonna send the Valdosta Wildcats off to play the number fourteen in the nation. This will be held at the Unity Park Amphitheater from seven PM to nine PM. So, dress up in your Wildcat color, colors, and come out and celebrate this, this event. On August the nineteenth, we're gonna, again, our hotspot cleanup, we're cleaning up from fifteen oh eight East Park Avenue, come out at nine AM in the morning, so we're gonna do this from nine AM to eleven, eleven AM. Want to get involved with the city, come out and give us a hand. September the fourth, November the, November the second, every Thursday, Citizens Police Academy. Application deadline is September eighth. Contact Officer Randall Hancock. September the twenty-second, Friday, another time, we're gonna celebrate a VSU Family, Family and Fun Night. Come out and celebrate the families that's coming in, and the new students that's coming into the city, going to Valdosta State University. This will be six PM to nine PM, also at Unity Park. We're gonna have food trucks, vans, come on out and celebrate and enjoy this event.
Are we feeding the kids free?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I just thought I was trying to help them.
City manager, thank you. Counsel, do you have anything to add tonight? Counsel comments?
You mentioned the Citizens Police Academy. I think it'd be prudent to ask the Citizens Advisory Board members to take that class.
Well, that's it. Okay, noted. Thank you. Any other counsel comments tonight? Seeing none, I'll entertain.
Sure.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.